County Council's now in session. The Honorable Robert Winkler will give the invocation pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads, please. We thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day, for the beautiful weather today, and for the rain we've gotten over the last several weeks. We needed it, but it's nice to see the sunshine. Thank you for all the many blessings you bring us each and every day in this country and in this community. Thank you for all of our first responders, public safety officers, military men and women throughout the country that protect us and protect these rights. Give us wisdom this evening to make the best decisions with the evidence that's put before us and what we vote on. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is oath of office for boards and commission members. So when I call your name, if you'd come forward so Mr. Kendry can swear you in, our county attorney. It looks like just one. Debbie, is that Cochran?
Chacharone.
Oh, boy, did I mess that up. You can announce the person. How do you say that? Okay, we didn't have anybody sign up for appearances. We had one person sign up under the public form. And I cannot read your handwriting. It looks like Ash something and Muman, is that correct?
I must have signed the wrong thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, you didn't, okay. Well, I guess we have no one that's gonna do public form. So do we have a motion on consent agenda?
I move that we remove items eight, nine, 10, and 11 from the consent agenda.
And where you want them moved to?
I guess they would all go in new business.
New business?
Anything in new.
And at the end's okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Please, your number.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item is public hearings, and we have no public hearings. Did Mr. Johnson do the agenda meeting this past week? Oh, that's right. Okay.
I was trying to make it different.
I got you. Okay.
We did, well, we did vote, didn't we?
Did we move to approve subject to taking those out?
Well, it's a motion to...
Okay, we need to...
We still need to approve the report.
Okay, well, let's have a new motion then.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item. Consider third reading case number 1735 to rezonate from AGC to RUD at 1737 Highway 557 in the Clover Community.
A motion to defer to the next meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just curious as to why. What's our goal?
At the last meeting, we, I had asked for it to be deferred to the 19th, and that just...
Oh, 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 okay.
Oh, that was what I was gonna ask you, was to defer it to the 19th?
Yes.
Okay. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item. Consider third reading case number 1740 to rezonate from RUD to RD1 at 3519 Pleasant Road in the Fort Mill Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
I had asked in the public hearing that the applicant reach out to the neighbors. I have received word that that happened. None of the neighbors subsequently reached out to me to tell me that they were unhappy with what they had heard during that process, so I see no reason to hold this up at this point.
Anybody else? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, new business. The Finance Department, Public Works, and Information Technology will provide an update on the county's 10-year capital infrastructure and information technology plans. Is that, oh, okay, Kevin?
I've got Joel and Eric here to make sure I get the details right if need be. We're gonna give an overview of how all the projects that were in last year's budget.
Is your name in the address? Can you speak up, please?
Kevin Madden, 12 College Street.
Okay.
Okay, does this thing turn on?
Here, Kevin, we might have to turn down Jim's mic.
Karen, never go on vacation when we have a council meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
These are the facilities that Public Works had in the budget last year and the various projects. Three of them over here move over, are gonna be slathered next year. One of them unfortunately is a big one, a roof replacement at the Heckle Center. A lot of stuff was done and knocked out for the facilities over here. There were some scope increases on a couple as well, but overall, I think the projects they got done were done in accordance with the budget. Next slide here, we talk about the equipment that we've got ordered, and all this is related to asphalt. Equipment is coming in under budget. Critical needs road resurfacing due to the winter, being the winter it was, only about 70% of those projects are gonna be completed this year, so we're rolling forward 25% into next year's budget. Technology, we're gonna pretty much get everything done that was budgeted in technology done during the year as well. The budget and not spent, $2.3 million, okay? You'll notice that column projected year date spend, $5,170,000. That's about $40,000 greater than what we budgeted. If y'all remember during the budget process, in between first and second reading, we moved some stuff around and we did not levy the taxes to get the $8 million worth of budget expenses. That was done because we wanted to make sure we had all the kinks ironed out, as well as didn't wanna levy a tax and then not spend it on this particular fund. This fund, it's very important that we spend it every year when we dip into this. So we had some cushion built in there for the general fund to absorb the excess via transfer in the year. What I've learned from looking at this and how the project shook out, I sorta wanna do the same thing next year. If we've got, let's say, $6 million worth of projects, maybe not budget $6 million, accounting for some stuff not happening, and if we do end up paying the $6 million, then we cover the transfer from general fund. I think Public Works, if you look at the Excel spreadsheet they've got over every facility, every location, it is extremely detailed and goes out years and years and years. They're doing exactly what Mr. Johnson has asked for to make sure that we've looked at all our facilities and what the needs are gonna be coming down the road over here. That's probably one of the best fallouts of this fund is making sure we've got all that documented and accounted for. Okay? Got, hey, we did have some budget savings on some projects, as well as an increase in scope as well. 1819, this is where we stand right now. This budget is not finalized, they're still working on this stuff. Can I give you an idea of what we're looking at going through this fund that's coming up here? The infrastructure, and this is by location, okay? So each one of those facilities might have various projects underneath them, okay? But for the facilities right now, we're looking at about $4 million, okay? The critical roads resurfacing underneath that. And then the technology. The technology, one thing I'll point out, the $1.9 million, $90,000, we're going through the RFP process with that right now. When it comes time for first reading, we'll have a better idea of when that money's gonna shake out, 'cause a lot of that's gonna slide into 1920. We're not gonna levy that much in taxes, but we don't have that broken down yet. Also, about $600,000 of the public safety software, we're gonna get reimbursed for the state for, so we're not gonna budget that portion of the 1.8 as well. Okay? That's it. Questions, please?
We trust you 100%, Kevin.
I hope not to let you down, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Trust but verify, yes, sir.
That's what Reagan said. See that you show an infrastructure 10-year capital plan, you have in 1819 just over $4 million budgeted.
Yes, sir.
In 1920, it's $699,000.
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I'm thinking back to last year's budget. That is, we kind of dedicated, we said we're taxing for this purpose.
Yes, sir.
And so in 1920, that tax...
Dropped significantly.
Should go, I mean, we should reduce mileage from that $4 million mark to a $700,000 mark.
Yes, sir.
Because we're not gonna spend that much money. And the next year, when we spend $75,000, we're gonna see, and that is a graph...
It's gonna be up and down.
Up some, it'll come down some, but we can, our, the taxpayer can rely on the fact that we're not going to bank their money and sit on it. If we're gonna spend what we need each year, and that's it.
Yes, sir. This is gonna be a true pay-as-you-go, and my goal at the end of every year is to have this fund zero out, because we did not set this fund up to build up a capital projects fund balance to use for some future facility. It's literally pay-as-you-go rather than borrowing. We looked at this last year, it was saving the taxpayers about $30 million to do it this technique rather than doing it most governments to go out and levy debt to pay for this, that, and the other every year. It's a true pay-as-you-go, and it will be volatile. That's something that might cause the taxpayers some shock when they see something go from, let's say, five mils down to one mil, but so be it. I wanna make sure y'all have enough information where you can explain it to your constituents, and if need be, I can talk to them about it, why it's operating like that. We're not trying to level it out and levy a certain amount and keep some in reserve and do this and that. It's a true pay-as-you-go.
That's what I recall. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And this is a work of progress. Before the budget's signed and approved, you might see small changes.
Change twice before we got it.
Yes, sir.
No more questions? Thanks again, Kevin. Doing a little housekeeping here. Sorry about that. Next item, consider first reading case number 1731 rezoned from RD2 to RUD at Heckle Boulevard in the Rock Hill Community.
I'd like to move to approve for discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Roddy.
Mr. Chairman, I was contacted by Mr. Roger Dale. I went out to his property probably about a month ago now. He informed me that one of the cell phone companies had reached out to him, they had scouted this location, and was interested in putting one of those cell towers there on his property, which sits in a floodplain that he can't use the property for anything, he's just paying taxes on it, it's heavily wooded. And they're interested in putting a cell phone tower, which nowadays they're hardly ever noticeable, because they, they come in and dress them up, make them look like pine trees, a bit tall trees. This area is wooded. And I noticed that, you know, staff in the planning, planning commission said there was no other zoning in the area like this, but this is not gonna be for any kind of housing situation, it's just to erect a cell phone tower, which we see them along 485, we got them, we've approved, we've approved this in other areas in the county, maybe not this close inside the city, but this, this is one of those properties that sits just, just outside the city limits. But the property can't be built on, it's in a floodplain, the gentleman's paying taxes on it. He would've never probably even thought to ask for this rezonate had he not been contacted. And funny thing is, when I read where, where planning commission denied it, but just imagine if we didn't have cell phone towers, you know, everyone up here in this room probably has a cell phone, so if we're not getting good connection, you know, what would be without good reliable cell phone service? And also, he didn't, he didn't withhold any information, he did let me know that they were going to put a little bit of cash flow into his, his account, so this was a financial move on behalf of the cell phone company to reach out to him, to offer some financial incentive to do this. But I think we need more cell phone towers, and like I say, if it was 20, 30 years ago, it probably wouldn't look good, but you know, the way they come in now and dress them up, you hardly ever even notice them unless they're out in plain view, but this location is heavily wooded there, and I talked to him and done a little bit of research, there's no, there's no health concern about it, there's, it doesn't devalue the neighborhood, the surrounding area's property. Like I said, and the biggest thing is, you hardly ever even notice them once they go up, because in this area, it's gonna be also wooded around, they're clean enough off to be able to get the trucks in and have the barricades and fences up, but it's very minimally noticeable from Heckle. And I don't, I don't think it would, it would be invasive or intrusive or stick out in any shape, form, or fashion. And if we needed, I think there's a representative here this evening that could give us a little more information. That was just what I was able to gather, and as, as the month went on, you know, I was looking around and, you know, you have to look hard to find them if they're, if they're done pretty, pretty good, but, you know, we do have them throughout, because we all want good cell phone communication. But the biggest thing is it's not noticeable, it doesn't devalue anybody's property, there's no health issue related to it, so I would just ask for consideration, and if we need any more, any, any more information, we'd love to have those who are petitioning to come and help plead their case and see if we could find a good fit for it.
Mr. Roddy, is this between Highway 5 and Hurlong, that stretch?
No, it's, it's basically across from the fire department that's on Heckle, just down to the left a little bit, where Tyson's Forest is.
Oh, okay. But it's across the street?
Yeah.
Well, that is that...
Fire department.
Well, that is the span I'm talking about then, right?
You said...
Highway 5, Main Street?
Main Street and Hurlong.
Which is Highway 5 and Hurlong.
So if you, if you're on the intersection of Heckle and 5 and Hurlong, it's in between those two, just across from Tyson's Forest, that fire substation.
And it bumps up the back of it?
I think that...
Bumps up against Huntington?
Yeah.
Have you gotten feedback from them?
No, I haven't heard from anyone. But we could, we could notify them, they can come.
Yeah, that's what I was checking to, to make sure it's first reading. Do you want anybody to speak?
If, if there's a gentleman who made the trip tonight who could maybe shed some more information that I, I don't know.
I mean, we have a public hearing on it, I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's true too, but any other questions come? Yes, or Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I just, and I, I mean, at first, when I saw the recommendation denial, I wanted to know why, and, and basically, it makes a lot of sense, 'cause you can't do anything else without, they're gonna have to get an additional variance for a cell phone tower, so just a straight-out zone, and there's nothing to do, but the zone with the variance, you get a straight, a cell phone tower in the, I mean, I think our citizens want cell phone service certainly at first reading, definitely wanna hear the, the public opinion. I kinda have, feel opposite about the mono pine construction that, that Mr. Roddy does. It looks like a fake tree to me, and a regular old cell phone tower blends in with the sky better. I'm kinda more open to that, but as, as we come, as we, as we come down, I mean, I, citizens desert, they want, they want cell phone service, just want, like they want water and sewer and electric.
Any other comments?
I'll make a quick one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
Bless you.
I agree with Chad, I think the trees look kinda funny. They definitely look fake to me when they're, you know, 100 feet taller than all the other trees, and they got a few limbs gathered here and there, it looks kinda strange, but, but first reading this Thursday night, my plan was to vote no on this, just because staff recommended denial, planning commission recommended denial, but, you know, I'm willing to go ahead and support it on this reading, get the public hearing and see what happens there, 'cause we got two more times to vote on it before then.
That, that, staff also told me that there's, that it's basically non-buildable right now anyway, so the cell phone tower's about the only thing that's gonna go on.
Yes, or Mr. Roddy?
I can make one more comment, and I think when we get into the process of those coming before us, if, if the area or the general public says we'd rather have one that looks like a traditional one, and we can get the information as to how high it would be, you know, some better idea of what it would look like, because now we just know what's intended, we don't have, I haven't seen any plans on how high it would be versus what's already there. Would it really stick out like a sore thumb, or would it not be as noticeable? So those details could come out as we go through the process, but I, I'm sure I'm not doing it much justice trying to explain it, but I'd much rather have those who know all the intricate details to say, well, the trees there now sit 80 feet, this will sit, it may be shorter, maybe taller, we don't know that way, the area, the area can know. Well, ma'am, I don't know how tall it's gonna be, and all the details can come out from those who are proposing what they wanna do, but I would like to know the details.
We do have, there's a bunch of pictures in here, but it's all of the mono pine, it would be interesting to see the same pictures with the, with the regular cell phone.
So all those details can come out as we go to the second and third reading and give it, give it a fair chance.
Ms. Love?
So as a former member of the zoning board of appeals, we saw a lot of requests for variances to be able to put these in, and I am definitely in favor of the tower over a tree, because the two trees that were allowed during my time on the ZBA, I regret the approving, approving those, because of where they are, and they stand, I mean, they are ridiculous looking, way up above the other, the rest of the tree line, so, so I think a good comparison bump would be, are they willing to put in just a regular tower, and then to let the people see what, one versus, versus the other?
Okay. Yes, sir.
I think a regular tower would be a lot cheaper for them without being an expert on it, but that's true, I saw, see the one on 485, and I kinda laugh every time I ride by, but...
See the one over Lake Wild, coming down the main channel.
There's one within 200 feet of my neighborhood, and I never see it. I mean, it's just a, it's a regular, it's not a tree, it's the regular tower.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Regular towers don't stick out.
I've never noticed that one.
You know, the thing, the thing about them is that you don't see, if you're, if you're standing at the woods, you don't see the tree, it's when you get out a mile from it, or half a mile from it, or whatever, that's when you see it way up in the air. So, you know, the one that, that I approved for over toward Belmont was, not that I approved, but that, that we approved as a, as a board, was shocking when, once it went up, and you know, you start down the lake and you see this tremendous, you're like, oh, my gosh. I think if it put some Christmas ornaments and things on it, it might look all right during that time of year, but...
Well, you know, and I certainly wanna always support my fellow council members in their district, but I will, and I have no problem supporting this first reading, but you have that side of Hurlong, I have the other side. So there, that neighborhood is right across the street from me, so I'd make sure that people talk to people in that neighborhood.
They can now with good cell service.
Okay, let's move on. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, council to review and approve the stormwater utility district feasibility study and authorize the planning and development services department to prepare an ordinance program to create a stormwater utility district.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I will start.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I attended the stormwater, stormwater utility workshop we had, and I have to be honest, I walked into the workshop and I was not a believer. I left it pleasantly surprised that this was something that we could, this was a tool we could actually use and for numerous things, and it's, and it's something that we need. Those who, I think, the majority of us were able to, some weren't unfortunately, and that happens, trust me, my, my schedule's crazy too. But I was amazed at all the, the tools underneath this that were going to allow us from growth and, and planning, and just to be able to enforce our own ordinances in a, in a better manner. I'm, I'm gonna support this and would encourage everyone to, to support this so we can move forward. This is not, this is not a tax just to have tax. This is, this is, this is part of the ability to control what's happening in our area and in unincorporated parts of the county, and I, I support this.
I have a question.
Ms. Love?
Is, is this a, are we gonna have multiple readings on this? What exactly are we, I mean, is this an all and done in this?
Ms. Love, this, this is what you guys are gonna let us do tonight, basically, say, y'all get started on an ordinance, and there'll be three readings and public hearing, just like everything else. So the details of everything that's got to do with the stormwater utility district will be fleshed out over this period of time, but this is saying, we've done, Wolfert has submitted the report, staff move forward on drafting the ordinance.
Okay, so, but we, you know, I'm not in full support of this.
Sure.
So, and I have a...
But you're not voting to put this in place by voting on this tonight.
Right, so there's another opportunity to say yea or nay.
The ordinance itself, when it's, when it's presented to you, like any other ordinance, that's, that's when the debate can go on.
Okay.
Mr. Winkler?
I'll just say, I, I had mixed emotions about it as well when I went to the workshop. I learned a lot. I didn't know we had over 118 miles of stormwater drainage and ditches and pipes and retention ponds and everything in the county that we have to maintain, and that, you know, we basically spend out of the general fund right now just to kinda patch them and keep them together, but there are some pipes and things that were put in back in the, I understand, mid-'50s or so, when we first started subdivisions in the county, and those pipes have been in the ground the whole time since then, and nobody's done any maintenance or anything else to them, just to kinda keep them, you know, when they, when they clog up and flood somebody's property, then we go out and try to figure out what clogged them up and clean them up, and that's about it. This'll help us to stay ahead of that, and a couple of things that I've had, asked by citizens when I've talked to them about it is, no, this will not be, you know, a slush fund into the general fund. This is a separate account that can only be used for stormwater. When it's, you know, collected for that, that's all we can use it for, is to maintain that area and to make sure, you know, a lot of this came about after the big floods down Colombian, down toward the coast and that kinda thing, and if we can use this properly, then we can hopefully help avert some of that. And so I think that is a, you know, a reason to, to support it. I know we, we still don't know what it's gonna look like, so we spent the money on the study to get this far, I think we need to go ahead and support it to get the rest of the way to figure out what the ordinance is gonna look like.
Anyone else? Ms. Cox?
I, I am in favor of us doing revisions to the stormwater regs and for us to increase fees and fines to folks who are not following the, the existing rules. That is something that I think council had asked for a good while back, and so we definitely need to ensure that growth pays for growth and that folks that impact the existing stormwater infrastructure are required to pay for that. However, I am very concerned about us assessing another tax on folks, knowing that the general fund, it has already been used to do what we're doing now, unless there's gonna be a line item reduction in the budget that basically eliminates that from the budget, I don't see how this would not be double taxation on, on the folks in our community. I think in this case, we need to watch out for the taxpayers, and I've listened to the report that came back, and I just don't think that we've done enough. I think that there are opportunities for us to increase the fines, make sure that the folks that are actually impacting it are paying for it instead of assessing a whole new fee and tax on our existing residents for something that should be taken care of through other routes, so I do not support this.
Yeah, let me get Mr. Roddy. Oh, you're good? No, Mr. Johnson?
Well, and I, second, Ms. Cox's comments about, you know, if we certainly have to find a way not to, we're, we're taxing you $900,000, we're spending this out of the general fund, we certainly don't need to continue taxing you $900,000 for this. What bothered me, and I kinda walked into that meeting with some of your feelings, Ms. Cox, my problem was we have not, we're spending $900,000 a year out of the general fund right now on this cost, with a estimate that it's gonna escalate to $4 million soon, a year, to, just to upkeep our, our current infrastructure. When you're now talking $4 million at a million three per mil, well, there's you almost a three mil increase that this council will have to pass just to maintain its current utilities. Perhaps the council would prefer to raise taxes somewhere between $2.5 and $3 mils. I don't think this council will, though, do that, which means we're going, you can't, I don't think you can fine $4 million worth, and that, and that, and that's where, that's why I became a supporter of this at the workshop, is 'cause I, as I sat there, I could not figure out how to, how to get around this $4 million number. I certainly pay a roughly $108 a year right now, living in TUK, for this. I, I hope that it's all being spent wisely by the city of TUK, but I can assure anyone that this will not just be money wasted, this is going to go to making sure our infrastructure is where it needs to be, especially when you have a, what, a 50, 40, 50-year shelf life on most of this stuff, and, you know, we're, we're there, and that's why you're about to start seeing $4 million costs, just to keep up with it. If you, if you sat in the crowd or listened to me, you know I'm not, I'm not somebody who likes to raise taxes or, or do anything to increase our, our spending budget, but I think this has to be done. We have a, we have to keep up our infrastructure.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I was sitting in the workshop with you while you were making those revelations, and another one that I saw you, you made, and I can't believe that, I was waiting for you to make the point...
I had to leave something for you.
Okay, there you go. Was that... Was that, I mean, one thing that was apparent, it's the difference between the tax and the fees. We have some property owners that generate more stormwater, and the fee will be more fair, fairly even to pay for the expenses that you cause. And it's not just that we have aging infrastructure in stormwater, it's the new MS4 regulations that are coming, that it just takes more resources to meet them. So that's where the increased demand's gonna come from. But, yeah, that's part of the whole situation too, the tax versus fee thing, whether it's, is it fair for everybody to pay a portion of the fee when I'm generating more than Brett? And that's probably not true, but that's just an example.
And I'll just quickly say, I appreciate y'all bringing that up, because I had meant to mention that, but one of the reasons I do support it is, if we levy another millage of tax to pay it out of general fund, then everybody pays that across the board. With this fee, if you have more impermeable surface and you generate more runoff, then you pay more than the person who has a gravel driveway and not a lot of surface that's, you know, causing that. So it's a, again, pay for what you cause or pay for what you use. If you generate more runoff, you pay more for this fee. If you don't, then you pay less. It's not across the board, everybody pays for it the same way.
Or pay-as-you-go kind of logic. But, and I, I think this was the first meeting workshop, I mean, after my heart surgery, so I'm a little cloudy, but...
You supported it.
It's still cloudy.
Well, I remember that part.
You had a heart surgery.
I remember that part. But I expressed some, you know, I do have some strong concerns, like Ms. Cox expressed, but certainly I want the staff to have an opportunity to see what they come up with and present it to us. And I'll just wait to hear what they want to present us. That being said, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to consider adopting a resolution authorizing and consenting to the transfer by Ross Dresz for less to Ross Distribution Company of certain properties subject to fee in lieu of tax agreements, and to the addition of Ross Distribution Company as a party to such agreements.
Move to defer.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
I am, I am moving to defer this. We are having issues with Ross, and I think that if you want to be a partner with the county, you should be a partner with the county.
That's it?
I'll second that as well.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next will be the consent agenda items that we move forward. The first one is council to consider authorizing a waiver of the required application fee, alternate, designate John Gardner as the responsible party for application fees.
I move that we, per county staff policy and per staff recommendation, I move that we approve the waiver of this application fee as we do on all UD rezonings.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Winkler.
I asked for these to be removed, and the reason was, when we first started the UD rezoning, we stated to the public, I was here when staff met with the UD in my district, all the people that were, you know, looking at being rezoned, and we said, policy is, if they accept the rezoning and the group rezoning, then we would not pay them. But if at some point in the future they wanted to be rezoned and didn't take it when we're doing this, they would pay. Or if they were in a district we hadn't got to yet, and they wanted to jump ahead and go ahead and do it now, they would pay. Now, since then, we've refunded some and done some stuff, but the last thing publicly said that I heard and saw was that if you moved ahead or you didn't do it when the time was said, then public, our policy was, we would charge you. I wanted it brought up so we could discuss it and say publicly, okay, if we're gonna start waiving them for all UD rezonings, that's the policy. So we need to discuss it. Plus, I didn't see how we could discuss designating something in a consent agenda, because a consent agenda has no discussion. And so in here, we've gotta, you know, we gotta consider it and authorize it, whether it's Mr. Gardner or we waive it, that takes a discussion to decide whether Mr. Gardner pays it or we waive it. You can't do a good discussion in consent agenda.
Fair enough. Ms. Cox.
I think, Andy, can you explain what happened? And I do agree, you know, that what we've talked about with the fees, in this particular case, he was supposed to be, what our policy was, is that folks could get added to the batch, and he was supposed to be added to the batch, and staff will represent to you that, he fell through the cracks and called up and said, why didn't you do that? I mean, Andy, if you wanna tell them what happened.
That's exactly right. Actually, I believe it was August we had this on for first reading, to put Mr. Gardner in with a batch. There was some, honestly, some paperwork issues that had to do, nothing to do with Mr. Gardner, but we had to get some signatures from other applicants in that particular batch, planning commission hit the brakes on it. And quite honestly, since Mr. Gardner wasn't part of the district that was being rezoned, he just fell through the cracks. We didn't catch it until it was brought up to us that, hey, timeout, I was supposed to get rezoned back in August. So that's on us for letting it fall through the cracks. That's why staff's recommending, we would have waived the fee back in August, September, whenever it would have been passed, we recommend now that that be the same. To your point, Mr. Winkler, about being able to discuss something that is on consent, the code basically says if you don't designate anybody, the fee's effectively waived. So having it been on consent, you would have not designated Mr. Gardner of having to pay the fee, so it would have been waived just by default. But just, absolutely unequivocally, staff recommends waiver of the fee in this particular case.
Mr. Roddy.
Just for clarification for those watching on, can we put out what's the fee that we're looking to waive?
$750.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, and I appreciate the discussion, that's the reason to waive the fee, and that was my understanding, but the way that it was listed, it's not the first time it's come up, we have to decide whether to waive or not, and it's hard to make a decision in consent. The next item is to discuss, it's hard to discuss anything.
Sure.
So if it has to, if there's a decision or a discussion that has to be made, I mean, if we don't have to discuss it, don't put it in there, and, you know, we don't have to discuss it. But, yeah, I do, I remember the fee decisions, just like Mr. Winkler, in fact, we had, we brought one up, we brought one up and made our fire station start paying the fees. And, yeah, in both of these cases, I think there's reasons to waive the fees, but it doesn't hurt to follow proper procedure. I do encourage, as we're going through the budget services, when we're waiving fees, I don't know if the finance director's listening, there's still an expense to do it. I mean, that's why we charge fees, because we have to do the public hearing. Whether we need to include it as a line item in our budget or somewhere, so that the fees need to be, we don't need to penalize the planning department, because we're waiving their fees. If we, if, you know, there needs to be a budget line item where it comes out of us is my opinion.
Like a chargeback?
I'd rather not.
Like a chargeback.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Cox?
If there are folks that are listening, because we haven't gotten to several of the districts, I do want them to understand that this UD rezoning project was something that council initiated. So our plan was that everybody that was going through this, because it's the county staff that wants this UD rezoning changed, folks don't have to pay that fee, that's not fair to make folks pay that fee. In this particular case, this person, we do have a mechanism for folks who may not be within that batch naturally to jump in. You can't force us to do it sooner, but when that batch comes along, then you come on in and you're gonna get treated the same way. So this individual's gonna get treated the same way, actually, he should have happened a while back, because he waited for the batch to come through. So that folks who are listening, when it comes time for you to get pulled into this, you understand that, and understand that we're not expecting you to pay that fee.
Yeah, equally, it wasn't, it's not fair for us to make you rezone your property and charge you a fee. I mean, this is definitely, we are trying to get rid of UD zoning, but agreed.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, council to discuss and authorize a council-initiated rezoning from the UD zoning district to RUD district for property located on Currington Ferry Road in the Catawba Community Tax Map Number 754000067.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
Again, because the notes said council to discuss is the main reason I wanted to pull it out, because I didn't feel like you can discuss in a consent agenda. I think it's...
I don't see any other hand motions. So question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider first reading case number 1804, rezon from, I'm sorry, UD to RUD at Currington Ferry Road in the Catawba Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, consider first reading case number 1803, rezoned property from UD to RC1 at 1499 Twin Lakes Road in the Rock Hill Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, okay, bear with me while I turn the pages. Okay, committee reports, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, the Honorable Chairman, Michael Johnson.
Finance and Operations met today at 5:00. We approved Marie McFadden for Keep York County Beautiful at Large, Tim Gross, Jim Jones, and Alan Chatham for Catawba Regional Workforce Board, Nick Cotton for the Hospitality Tax Commission District 5, Creighton Hayes for York County Forever District 7, Mayor David O'Neil, Catawba Regional Council of Governments, Tony Smith, ZBA District 3. We deferred appointments for the Riverview Fire Tax Board and the Board of Rural Fire until April 19th, because by then we will have information regarding the, from our consultants regarding the fire plan. And we kind of were this close, we didn't feel comfortable appointing someone until we had an idea of what we were going to do. We also reviewed several boards and committees, the Boards of Disability, Special Needs, York County Natural Gas, Rock Hill York County CVB, Building Board of Appeals, Catawba Mental Health Board, and the York County Library Board for potential violations under our ethics ordinance. We had two people who have a concern, and it's regarding unpaid taxes. We have sent them, as our policy, we will now send them a letter, they will have 30 days, or they will be administratively removed from the Board of Commission. Lastly, we met with the Recreation Coalition, in case you don't know what the Recreation Coalition is, every municipality in York County who basically runs a, has a park or runs a recreation department. They came before us tonight and asked that their millage be raised from one and a half mils roughly to three mils. They basically want $2.4 million added to their budget. Their logic, argument was that they're spending about 17, 18 million dollars a year roughly upkeeping their rec departments and their parks. I think that is one of the keys, that it's not necessarily the child rec part, it is sometimes it's just literally a walking trail park that they're having to spend money. Certainly an issue, I can see that. I explained to them kind of where our budget was, we had a good 30-minute discussion with them, and it will be a, the administration and staff will give us a recommendation for the budget, I am sure, on whether or not we should do this, but we certainly heard them today.
Let me, just for a refresher course, for a mayor like Tika Kay, I mean, do we have to approve them being on the cog? Since they're just...
Yes, electrically, we do have to approve.
We still have to approve. Okay. Next item, council member, new non-agenda comments? Any council members have a, yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
Two comments. One, I want to inform the council that I've asked Karen to try to squeeze in a economic development committee meeting before our next council meeting, if we could, to discuss some fee in lieu of agreement, updates on how that's going as far as what we're collecting and stuff, C-Fund update and project considerations, the ED budget, and then an executive session for some incentive discussions, for some ideas that...
Any other comments?
Looking at.
I think he's not finished.
And then I have one other.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The other one was, Mr. Williams reminded me, and I'm gonna bring it up again, while we've been talking about waiving all these fees, I still have a fart burn with the fact that y'all voted against me waiving the fees for my volunteer fire department. If I thought I'd get it passed, I'd ask for it to be put on the next agenda and have it voted on again to have it waived. But we waive everybody else's, and we got volunteer firefighters that are spending their time and getting out of their bed and going to answer fires, and we charge them $750 for a rezoning. I think it's ridiculous.
Okay, then. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Roddy.
I agree, Robert. Just want to make everybody aware, I just make everybody aware that on the 14th, we do have a public works committee meeting, we'll get the update from animal control, and I think this has been anticipated for a while, so just wanted to remind everybody that the 14th at 6:00 PM, Heffler Complex.
Ms. Love.
Yes. Okay. So I just want to let council know a couple of things that I'm dealing with in my district. One is that the Burger King at the corner of 557 and 49, or about the intersection of, I guess, 49, 274 and 557, that building was sold, and the new owners came in and they removed either 29 or 30 very large trees, and I've asked our staff and management to look into the replacement of those trees, that needs to be done. We have an overlay that does not allow them to remove those trees. And the second thing is that I had a resident call me with a concern about where the Penny's Project is cutting through on Highway 557. So he and I had a meeting with staff and the engineering department, county management, I guess I should say, and found out that in the beginning, when this was Penny's 3, so this is the project that's actually somewhat in the works next. And so what we found out was that there were several public meetings, however, the overall plan was changed after the fact, and the people were not notified of what that change would be. And that change is a pretty major detour around a home that could or could not be considered historical. So I've asked county manager and the engineering staff to check with the Army Corps of Engineers to see if that house is in fact deemed historical, because it would probably save us a lot of money to go straight, rather than curve around and put two additional bridges in on Highway 557, so. And, Bill? Okay, great, thank you.
And I don't see anyone else.
I have one more thing.
Oh, okay.
So the third thing is that...
You're trying to break a record, I see what you're doing there.
So, on Robert Winkler's behalf, I would like to invite everybody in York County to Silver in the City, which is gonna be downtown York this coming weekend, and Silver in the City, I am what's called an airstream addict, and it is quite an addictive thing, but, so the local airstream club is gonna host, with, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce here, we're gonna host about 30 airstreams, which will line up down Congress Street in York. They'll be there, they'll come in parade style on Friday afternoon about 3:00, and these are vintage airstreams. And so they'll come in about 3:00, they'll line up on Main Street, and they'll be there Friday night, Saturday night, and I think there may be an oyster roast on Saturday afternoon, some of the shops and things are doing stuff. I will be there, we have an airstream, Sweet Caroline is her name, and we will be there and want to invite anybody and everybody that would like to come out and hang out with us, including you, Robert, that'd be a good spot for you on.
I'm glad I was being down there.
Okay, all right, so come out and hang with us out at Sweet Caroline, bring a chair, and we'll have some food and refreshments and drinks, and it's...
And I believe there'll be a band Saturday.
Yes, there're gonna be some live music, and they're gonna allow tours of the airstreams at some point, and that's probably on Saturday, but you can go to, if you're on Facebook, you can go to Silver in the City and get, like, it gives you a little more information, but it's gonna be a lot of fun.
Are you sleeping on Congress Street this week?
I will be sleeping on North Congress, yeah, probably toward North Congress on Friday night, Saturday night.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make up something too.
I was asked, and I, since it didn't pop back on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, at one point, and this was brought up in the agenda meeting, at one point, we were going to receive an update on the audit of the fee in lieu agreements. Somebody had mentioned that.
Yeah.
Oh, my agenda says there is no executive session.
It's not, it's on mine, but I got that email, yeah.
All right.
Now, here's a better answer. We'll get right on that.
And lastly, I just wanted to say that this has been extraordinarily short meeting. I can tell you, I don't know who handled the agenda meeting, but they must have done it.
Mr. Johnson handled the agenda meeting. Speaking of that, do we have items on the executive session?
Yes, sir. I believe we go into executive session to receive legal advice regarding the opioid litigation. I also move that we, to receive legal advice and discuss contractual matters regarding the FLO agreement update.
There you go. We have a second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. We'll be back at 7:00 to finish up.
Yeah, I just wanted to, said that when we first started talking about this, that, you know, I don't want it, sounded a whole lot like a money grab when we first started talking about it, but if we can use this money to fight the...